There was one as low as 21 feet, 36 feet, 20 feet, 29 feet, 23 feet, 46, 47, 25 feet. So several reductions that are similar or less than what the applicants requested.
And then again, why did staff approve it?
So staff recommended approval because it met all six variance criteria. I can emphasize the special conditions and circumstances of the lot orientation and just the actual size. And it's, you know, obviously an odd shaped lot with the flag and the way that the home is situated creates a special circumstance in the way that that orientation is of the existing home and anything that could be located in the rear.
Okay. And then my last question, Mary, is for Mr. McLaughlin. You made it while you're coming up, you made a statement about you don't know why we're holding to the 50 foot. Are you referring to Senate Bill 180? Of course, this is a bane of our existence around here, but what were you referring to?
No, my, my, my point was the way the new code is written on, on a lot like this, you're, you're bound to the 25 foot minimum, 50 foot average, not 50 feet across the board for the, for the buffer that was being referenced by Ms. Bradford. Not in the setback. I understand setback issue.
So you're talking about the wetland?
Yes.
Say that one more time, please.
So the buffer requirement on this lot is 25 foot minimum, 50 foot average, which even with this configuration, it would meet that.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about the setback. I understand setback issue.
I just thought you, you were mad about Senate Bill 182.
No, no, Senate Bill 180 is fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You better stop while you're ahead.
Okay, there are no other questions by members of the board. Okay, Commissioner Simran.
Thank you. So I'm trying, at the other properties that were shown, there was a map that was up here that had some dark green. Did all of that dark green resemble variances to the 50 foot setback? Was that what I understood from that?
Yes.
So all of them have less?
Yes, that's correct.
And then on the other side of the lake, all of them are within compliance?
So everything that is depicted with a dot on these maps indicates they've requested a variance. The green dots indicate they were all granted a variance to the normal high water elevation setback. And then there were a few red dots thrown in there, which indicates there was some parcel approvals or some modified approvals. Like in the instance that there was attached structures that were, or proposed, like additions that were proposed. And so they granted the pool variance, but not the addition.
I'm sorry, can, I'm still not clear. Can you go to the previous slide? Do you see that lime green colored one there? Is that just indicating it's a wetland? What, what's that color distinction marking? You got the dark green kind of at the north and then it connects to a lime greenish color. What's that distinction? That's not all the properties that have been giving variances, right? The stars are those with variances?
So the star indicates the subject property and then the-
And then where are the dots?
Green dots, if you look at the inset.
Sorry, my eyes are going and I don't, I'm in denial. I need glasses. I see the dots. Okay. So I, you know, I'm, I'm really sensitive to making exceptions for one when it sets a precedent for many. And I have lived and walked that fight for a very long time in East Orange County, trying to stop the domino effect. And to try to advocate for, you know, for some reason, we recognize this in Vision 2050 as, you know, a wetland, you know, improvement in that area. And so I tend to side on the side of science that there must have been justification for that. And I also respect the community's interest in trying to preserve what they all bought into, they all thought that they were getting. And with the, so I'm, you know, I, I, I think that there are options. And when I look at the actual plan, it looks like this is a homeowner's preference. And while I understand that preference is important on our own personal property, you also bought within compliance of what were standards and what was allowed. And therefore the site plan should concur with that. So that's my position on this. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the district commissioner for a potential motion.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I appreciate the questions and I appreciate Lakin and your team for getting information, the applicant. And I, of course, appreciate the community for really paying attention and showing up. You know, we have so many of these advisory boards that sit really as the stewards and guardians of our lake systems. And so that is an unpaid, thankless job that every now and then requires a road trip, you know, to, to make a point. And I think the part of today's hearing and the evidence that was presented and understanding a little bit about, kind of zooming in on some of the, the maps, it does appear to be a very large pool on a large lot behind a large house, which is beautiful. It's like my favorite house on the Beltway. But I want to say that I do think that the point about having variance criteria that is specific checked mark variance criteria is, is the way we go through this. And so understanding that if there were some modifications to the size of the pool, the shape of the pool, the placement of the pool, that we wouldn't be here. And so I do find that the variant, I understand that, that staff worked through this as well. But seeing the evidence in front of me and coming to, you know, feel really strongly about us having variances for a reason. They're there because we need to have them there in order to keep our residents safe and keep our, you know, have a uniform way of operating when we allow development. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for denial of variance.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? I only hear one no, maybe two no's, three no's.
The motion to-
Deny. So, okay, so no, so it, it failed. No, in this case would mean that you would be doing the converse, you would be voting to approve.
Yeah, give them the opportunity to come with the compliance.
No. So I'll just, okay, so Commissioner Wilson made a motion to deny. And the recommendation for staff and the BZA had been to approve. She made a motion to deny. So when you vote, if you had voted aye, you would have been voting to deny. Voting no or nay, you're voting in the converse of that. Okay, all right, so I'll just make sure you, you hesitated there. Okay. The motion failed, so is there another motion?
I mean, I'll make, I'll make a motion for approval and I apologize, but this, with the condition set forward, I mean, it's, they've done this before and, and staff and the board agreed 100%, so.
What was the condition again?
The conditions that were set by staff.
Okay, okay, so the recommend, your, your motion is for the recommended action.
Recommended action with the conditions set forth by staff.
Okay, all right.
May I request, did Lakin read those conditions or something?
Lakin, if you can put the action up. The, the action included the condition.
Do you want the conditions or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the standard three and then this fourth one is a hold harmless.
All right, there's a motion. And who was the second on the?
Commissioner Moore.
Commissioner Moore. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
No.
I'm gonna vote no. All right, motion does pass. Four to three. All right, with that, we'll move to the next item. This is item C4. We'll open the public hearing on this item. Ms. Blanchard is going to be framing this item for us. With that, you'll recognize.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today to bring the University Boulevard pedestrian cyclist safety study to you for the public hearing for this project. We'll go through the background, the study itself, the alternatives analyzed, the public involvement, the project schedule in summary, and we will have an action requested today. Beginning with the background, University Boulevard connects the University of Central Florida with Full Sail University. There are existing improvements along the Boulevard. The UCF pedestrian safety study from Rouse Road to Alafia Trail is completing construction. That is a pedestrian safety project. The intersection improvements at Dean Road are underway. We're surfacing from Goldenrod Road to State Road 417. And our study covers the western portion from University Boulevard, of University Boulevard from Semeran to Goldenrod Road. The project was recommended for study by the former District 5 Commissioner. And it's 18 on the top 30 of the Vision Zero High Injury Network. We have a very large pedestrian and cyclist presence. And we've noted over the course of the study, an increase in micromobility device uses in this segment. Again, the project is from Full Sail or Semeran Boulevard on the west to Goldenrod Road on the east. The existing roadway is a six lane minor arterial with a 45 mile an hour posted speed. There are sidewalks on both sides of the road. There are no bicycle lanes. The right of way varies from 128 to 162 feet. We do have some pinch points. There are five major intersections. It was recently resurfaced. And the traffic volumes have been stable as indicated by the graph on the bottom right of this slide. The study, we always go with the context classification from Florida Department of Transportation. This is a C3C suburban commercial segment. This allows for a 35 to 45 mile an hour design speed. And it gives us flexibility in enhancing multimodal features. The project within its limits are mostly commercial. Full Sail University occupies a significant portion of the segment on the southwest side. And commercial developments occupy the dominant rest of the segment with some multifamily housing. It's primarily built out and full cell student housing is proposed. If you look at the top map within the green square, this is on the north side of the road across from the main university campus. A pedestrian bridge was required as a condition of approval for this development. And that is in the process of evaluation. We're working with the roadway agreement committee. We also, because there are some issues with that, as part of the study, we looked at an at grade signalized crossing and have vetted that. So whether it is the pedestrian bridge or the at grade crossing, we're confident that we will provide safe passage for these students with either option. Here is the existing land use. The orange is commercial, the yellow is residential, multifamily residential. And again, the green square shows where the new student housing is proposed. Also, some identification of the corporate businesses in this segment. The existing typical section is 11 to 12 foot travel lanes. We have a five foot sidewalk on the south side that is not adequate to county standards. A seven foot sidewalk on the north side, which does meet county standards. And I'll mention it was 45 again. Lighting was a big subject for this study. We did a luminosity study. The existing lighting is well below FDOT standards. There's insufficient lighting at transit stops and pedestrian crossings. The blue represents the insufficient lighting levels. If you see those little red, yellow sort of areas, that is where we do have sufficient lighting at some very limited locations. We did a crash analysis from 2018 to 2023. We had 813 total crashes in this six lane segment. 741 at signalized intersections, 72 roadway, 35 pedestrian bicycle. We have one fatality. That was an off-road crash. Most of the vehicle crashes were within intersections. And most of the pedestrian bicycle crashes were at side streets or driveways. And of note, 22% were at nighttime, again, an indication of the lack of appropriate lighting. Of the pedestrian bicycle related crashes, 10 were pedestrian, one was a scooter, 24 were bicycled. 91% resulted in injuries, 17% resulted in serious injuries. And of these, 17% occurred at nighttime. And there indicated here, the fatality is the red indication on the left hand portion of the map. Lynx does have a significant transit service in this corridor. We work very closely with Lynx on this project. So Link 13 is, had about, has about 150,000 trips. It's got a 60 minute headway. Link 29 does almost a quarter of a million trips a year. It has a 30 minute headway. And Link 436 South does over 600,000 trips a year with a 30 minute headway. The Accelerated Transportation Safety Program is investing over $200,000 in this corridor on transit to reduce the headway times to provide better service, as this is a very pedestrian oriented corridor. If we look at today, we always talk to you about AATD, that's traffic. So the AATD or average trips is 41,000 a year with a level of service D, which is acceptable to the county. For pedestrians and cyclists, we look at a level of stress. So your illustrations on the right help to inform the level of stress I'll go over with you. The pedestrian level of stress is LTS4. But due to the sidewalk width and the speed limit, if you look at your diagram, that shows that only the most aggressive pedestrian would be comfortable on this sidewalk. It does not include wheel users or children. The level of stress for bicyclists is also four. And again, this is your commuter who is used to cycling in a very stressful environment or your high speed cyclist who is regularly works either in the traffic lanes or on roads where they're large recreational users. So the transit level of service is E. This is getting close to failure. And this is one of the reasons we're working on the headways for this. So we, on alternatives, we did do a safety walk audit. This is our team. I like to mention that this is the team here on the right hand side. We reviewed alternatives. We did an evaluation matrix, which we'll present. And we did the recommended improvements. And this time, as with many of our projects, we have design and interim measures we'd like to propose. So when the safety audit was done in April of '24, we had 25 representatives, including Public Works, Metro Plan, FDOT, Lynx. The Aloma Elementary PTA brought up both parents and teachers came to do a walk with us. Orange County Sheriff's Office, very active, Bike Walk Central Florida. And if you see, we have a wheelchair and some other devices that allow you to observe the roadway like a student. And thank you to Bike Walk Central Florida, providing that equipment to us for our audit. And our consulting firm, VHB, also helped us with the Bike Walk Audit. So the first alternative installs a 10 foot sidewalk on the south side. It maintains the seven foot sidewalk on the north side. It reduces the lane width and posted speed. So we would go to all 11 foot lanes. This is a safety improvement. It slows traffic down. And the posted speed would go from 45 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour, also a safety, proposed safety improvement. And this maintains the existing median and carbon gutter. Alternative two, keeps the 10 foot sidewalk, reduces the lane width and posted speed, but would widen the median to 22 feet. This would move the inside carbon gutter out three foot on both sides. In order to do that, we would need to reconstruct that carbon gutter. We would also need to make accommodation for additional drainage improvements. Alternative three, reduces the 10 foot sidewalk to an eight foot sidewalk. It puts a five foot unbuffered bike lane on the outside of each travel direction lanes. It moves the outside carbon gutter two feet on both sides. Again, additional construction work requires additional drainage and additional cost for removing that carbon gutter. It does maintain the 40 foot speed limit. All of them do, all four options. And alternative four, puts the 10 foot shared use path on the south side. It keeps an eight foot protected bike lanes on both sides of the road. It would require six and a half to 16 and a half foot of additional right of way. And it would move the carbon gutter out five foot on both sides. And again, the construction and the carbon gutter moving does require additional drainage. And I'd also like to point out, this would then impact subdivision walls, commercial parking, commercial properties, and residential properties, individuals. So we would have about 80% of an acres damage, and we'll get into that in a second. So staff recommends alternative one. So this has a medium utility impact. We have significant utilities, by the way, on both sides of the road here. And we increase as we go through the options up to option four. And three would both have a high utility impacts because we're then getting into those utilities. The roadway drainage impacts are very low for the first two options. And then as we go to option three and four, those impacts go high. As I mentioned before, the right of way, we don't require right of way for the first three options, but we do require 0.8 acres of right of way for the fourth option. And the Vision Zero improvements are medium to high. So the cost of the recommended option is about $6.9 million. And going up to 7.3 for moving just the carbon gutter on the median. And then doubling that cost to put the five foot bike lanes in and then over tripling that cost to put the buffered bike lanes in. So the proposed recommended alternative is three 11 foot travel lanes on each direction with a 16 foot raised median, a 10 foot wide sidewalk on the south side, maintain the seven foot wide sidewalk on the north side, and maintain the existing median and carbon gutter. We would restrain that. So we're making additional recommendations and we'll get to these on the map. We are recommending mid block crosswalks with pedestrian hybrid beacons, pedestrian fencing in the median to channelize the pedestrians to the safe crossings, high visibility crosswalks, ADA upgrades, which are required, pedestrian safety intersection improvements, including reduced curb radius, leading pedestrian intervals at signalized intersections, protected left and right lanes, bus stop relocation and consolidation, access management improvements, speed management, lighting enhancements, and landscaping. Get into the cross sections. You see, at Semeran Boulevard, the Florida Department of Transportation have just completed a bikeway on Semeran Boulevard. And they will be doing crosswalks improvements if they're not completed already. We do have two slip lanes or immediate turn lanes there. Those need to be retained because they're DOT, but we're proposing to do raised crosswalks there, which will significantly slow down any vehicles using those slip lanes. We're adding distance in our turn lanes. Each driveway and each intersection will have high visibility crosswalks. Right now, a lot of driveways don't have them. Considering the number of pedestrians and bicyclists, we feel this is important. We have the 10 foot sidewalk on the south side. We have the leading pedestrian interval and protected left turn lanes at the Driggs intersection. This is the area where the proposed pedestrian bridge would be, as indicated on the map. If that is, turns out not to be tenable, we will be able to put that signalized crosswalk in instead. So this shows Full Sail University is predominantly on the south side. And pedestrian fencing along most of the roadway, moving east. We're gonna note the Costco and the Chick-fil-A. These are very, very high user destinations. So we have pedestrian fencing again. And the dots, the red dots are bus stations that we're asking be closed and relocated. The yellow dots are relocation places. The green dot on the bottom is something that's recommended by the study as a replacement bus stop. So again, high visibility crosswalks, extend the raised carbon gutter, and do median access control, 10 foot sidewalk, high visibility crosswalks and reduced curb radius, and extended left storage lane. And moving to the east, one more segment. The proposed, here in this slide, we have two median directional median openings, one on the west and one on the right, and a full median open in the middle. Right now, we have three full access openings. We've worked with the businesses in this area who agree that that will be fine. It will still facilitate anything they need for access to their businesses. And will create a much safer environment by channelizing traffic appropriately in this area. We have the 10 foot sidewalk, the pedestrian fencing, high visibility crosswalks. Again, two relocated bus stops. You can see that here, we have a mid block crossing. It isn't warranted quite yet, but we do predict that it will warrant during design. So we have made it a condition of the study that during design, at the point that that's warranted, it is included within the design as to be established by construction. And you see the bus stops are much closer to that. And again, moving east, we have high visibility crosswalks, the 10 foot sidewalk, mid block. We have a do, have a warranted mid block crossing here that would be part of design immediately. Pedestrian fencing. And again, two very high user locations, a Publix and a Target. And then at Goldenrod Road, we're reducing the curb radius and removing the channelization or the slip lanes. And we're gonna remove those, or propose to remove those if you so choose. So if the board decides to approve this study and, and recommend that we move to design and construction, you will go to 40 miles an hour. The level of service will go to E, but that's still within acceptable. The AATD will, in the projected timeframe, go to 52,000 trips. The important news is the pedestrian level of stress will go to LTS2. And if you look at the diagram, that means people will be comfortable walking their dog or walking with their children or walking to school or walking for recreation. And the bicycle level of stress will go to LTS1. That's as high as you get. That means that a parent would be comfortable allowing their school aged child to ride their bicycle to and from school without accompanying them. And then the transit level of service, as we improve the headways and add additional service, will go to a level of service D. So we also improved that. Interim measures, and that would be able to be accomplished in the next two to four years, would be convert the promoted southbound left turn phases to protected when pedestrians are present at Driggs and metric intersections. And no right turns on red when pedestrians are present. And we would propose blackout, blank outsides, which is the sign here on the right that says no right turn at Driggs, Forsyth, and metric intersections. Sorry about that. Additional interim measures, a temporary installation of flex stakes at the Costco driveway and permanent installation of a separator at design. That driveway is problematic. Right now, there's a bus stop which we're recommending they use and Costco is very popular. So this would help to channelize the cars appropriately and discourage pedestrians from trying to cross to the Costco in an inappropriate location. We would also install and refresh high emphasis pedestrian crossing markings at all of the driveways. So we conducted public involvement. There's a study website. It's still up. If you care to take a look at, most of the documentation is available there. We had 14 stakeholder meetings, two community meetings. We mailed two newsletters around 1,400. Newsletters were mailed out to the public. We did two surveys, one with Full Sail that had 148 participants between staff and students. And we did a community survey that had 16 participants. So from the Full Sail University study, this was on alternative one. They liked the proposed sidewalks. They liked that they were wider. They liked the protected pedestrian intersections and intervals. They wanted more crossing opportunities that were protected. They liked to, would like to have a connection to the trails in the area, which is possible on Forsyth. The Katy Way Trail is just north of here, so there is, we are preserving that connection. There are more bus routes and improved bus stops, which we have done. We have coordinated with Lynx and they're our partner on this. And lighting upgrades, which are absolutely necessary. If you look on the right, you can see the large blue line on the bottom graph means it's still most people drive. But you can also see through there that you have a lot of uses that we don't typically see. So you have a lot of micromobility uses, a lot of bikes and pedestrians in this corridor. In the community survey, we had offered the four options. And the most comments, but not necessarily all positive, came on the bike lanes, protective bike lanes. And then the second was the shared use path. As we go down, you see the number there. But of the responses in favor, and this is again on alternative one, the wider sidewalks were the most popular. The pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalks. The pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalks were the second most popular. Marked crosswalks in designated locations, more landscaping, narrow the travel lanes to reduce speed, and then the bicycle lanes came in at the bottom of that survey. So we had positive feedback. The public felt that it was important to improve the pedestrian and cyclist access in this area. They were happy to see incorporation of their comments. When we came back to them the second time, we listened and put more things in the study to meet their comments. They felt it was a good place to support this, and as always, we don't always have a hundred percent. We did have one person who opposed this project, who actually was opposing the bikeway on Semeran Boulevard. It felt that the bikeway on Semeran Boulevard was inappropriate, and it took up too much of the roadway, and then said that he didn't want to see a bikeway, and we're not proposing a bikeway on this segment, although we are proposing a ten-foot multipurpose path that will facilitate bicyclists. They, he also asked for improvements at the Semeran intersection with university, and that is a DOT project, and it is underway. So project schedule, we're here today, and this is the end of what studies does. So we came, we come and give you our presentation and ask for your permission to move forward. The project is currently not funded for design or construction. In summary, this is a high pedestrian bicycle activity corridor. The Full Sail student housing will increase the demand. The Vision Zero action plan indicates this is a high-injury network. This supports county multimodal and Vision Zero goals. The recommendations for enhanced multimodal facilities, lighting and access are being made. The improvements are all within the existing right-of-way, so we're not impacting any private or commercial property owners. And we had overall positive public support. Here are the goals, policies, and objectives, or among those that indicate that this project is compliant with the existing comprehensive plan. And we're asking that the board find the University Boulevard pedestrian and bicycle safety study consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we ask that you approve the study and direct staff to move forward with interim measures, design, and construction. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any members of the public present who should be heard on the side?
We have no speakers for the side of mayor.
Okay. Then we're opening up for any questions or comments by members of the board. Commissioner Moore?
They all smiled at me because we've been dealing with this state on four thirty-six, and we lost all of our flex lanes. So it's really great to see that the county on our roadway is actually really going to protect our pedestrians and our cyclists. And so that flex lane concept, will we be able to paint it green or any colors with?
No.
I'm assuming no with this state. I know I'm not supposed to bring this up, but I'm assuming you're avoiding any nighttime painting.
We are not recommending in this study any specific paint colors, but we will let the designers know if they're able to look at that, that we will comply with state standards.
And how, okay, I'm assuming you wouldn't. Federal standards. So the poles, I'm not sure the proper name for those, for the flex lanes, is that an expensive add-on for safety where you have the plastic poles to keep the cars, automobiles, out of that lane and protect the cyclists?
No, Commissioner, it's not very expensive, and it's fairly effective. The operation, well, the maintenance of those can cost a bit because they do get hit, but that would only be a temporary interim measure. We would, in design, put a permanent barrier there, like a hump that you would be familiar with, the Kelly Park, where that road comes in, where they put the median separator in. So those would just be an interim measure to increase the safety until we can come back and design in construction and put a permanent fix on that particular lane, turn lane.
All right, good. Well, I have to put in a little plug for Public Works because we had a meeting lately, well, fairly recently, about Park Avenue in Apopka because it was about time for the resurfacing. And we started talking about a very similar process in a study to look at what things would be warranted in high pedestrian areas. And I haven't even crossed over that area on a bike because it's too dangerous for me. I can't even imagine a child going from one side of town to the other across Park Avenue. So kudos to staff for being in agreement to do studies, to find safer ways to help because it's just a wonderful thing for quality of life for children, families, cyclists to be able actually to cross these large roads and gain that freedom of access of areas maybe they couldn't ride before. For me, without being able to cross Park Avenue, I can't get to the West Orange Trail safely. So I just appreciate Public Works being willing to do a traffic safety study on Park Avenue for me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Semerat?
Thank you, Mayor. Blanche, thank you so much to you and your team, and Brian. This was a project that I know started out in a different capacity with a pedestrian bridge, and I just wanted to know first if the applicant is on board with the removal of the bridge.
Commissioner, it's in the roadway agreement committee, and I don't believe they have reached a determination at this point. I think that's still in discussion. I attend those meetings, and they continue to discuss the criteria and the legal ramifications, and that's as far as I actually go with that sort of real estate right-of-way legal.
Yeah, if I may jump in. So with respect to the study itself, obviously, the study identified a need for pedestrian crossings in the general location of Full Sail. The study provides the option of either the pedestrian bridge, which is currently a commitment of the development, but going through some negotiations and discussions with the county, or alternatively, an at-grade crossing. And so we'll continue the conversations. I know we've got a meeting, you and I, and some of the team members later this week. We also, county staff and the development team continue to meet to talk about terms of a potential bridge agreement as well. So we haven't concluded those negotiations and discussions. Those will continue probably over the next several weeks and/or months.
Thanks, John. And then in the area where if a pedestrian bridge does not happen, it was a charcoal line instead of the staggered charcoal-yellow, charcoal-yellow, indicating a raised sidewalk, would that be raised as well?
So in the event of an at-grade, there are two locations on the study that were identified for mid-block pedestrian crossings. So is your question about sort of the character or how those might ultimately be designed?
No. In the event that the pedestrian bridges are not used, would we use the raised crosswalks in those spaces too? Because you remember, near Driggs Road, that square is all raised, and so I wanted to know if down further towards Full Sail, where that one is just indicated in charcoal, where it would show where the bridge was, if that would also be a raised crosswalk?
So I think that may ultimately be a valuation at the time of engineering, but Blanche, I'll look to you for a more specific response.
We do not dictate that. We make the recommendation, we use the data to say that the recommendation says that some sort of crosswalk, and this one would require a beacon, it would require to be signalized, is required there, but we do not look at this point. That would come in design and depend on conditions and the speed limit and what the criteria are for that. It's a design feature whether or not it's raised.
And then at that time, does it come back to the board again, once you learn that information?
It generally wouldn't. It would be an engineering issue and decision at that point. I think maybe two examples. One, you know, on four thirty-six, just south of this project, DOT just recently installed a mid-block pedestrian crossing. That is at grade. Of course, four thirty-six carries probably a higher volume of traffic, and it's probably a wider cross-section that they're trying to cross at that particular location. You contrast that with, I think, maybe referencing the crossing like off Corinne, which has a gantry and, you know, lights, but it also is raised, much lower speeds and much lower traffic volume. So those would all have to be considerations that would be evaluated as part of a design, exactly what the most effective and safe way to get pedestrians across from the north to the south and vice versa.
Okay, so let me, I have to ask just a very unstructured question then to kind of get a raw thought out, is that, yeah, it's eighteen hundred, I think, beds on the other side of the road, and, right? Is that the approximate number? I think it was. What I just worry about is that the age group, that's, that will be there. I just want to make sure that we are doing all of the safety preventative measures possible that we can do so that there would never be a phone call where we worry about, had we done something, maybe this wouldn't have happened. So as long as you're comfortable with your level of expertise on the safety level, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure we're doing all that we're able to.
So Commissioner, just again to confirm, there are two mid-block crossing locations for pedestrians that were identified as part of the study. Both of those, as those become real projects, and we'll go through a full engineering evaluation with recommendations by professional engineers to optimize the safety of those, of those crossings.
We are putting pedestrian fencing, if the mid-block crossing does come in, we will channelize with pedestrian fencing to make sure that that is the path that the pedestrians use. So we do put that in our recommendations.
Yeah, and I trust you, and I trust your safety evaluation on that. I just want to make sure that we've done everything, just knowing the, knowing the age group, knowing, you know, life at that age, and I just want to make sure that we feel comfortable with that design. So, thank you.
So, Blanche, you got backup. Two people stood up. Did you all have something you wanted to offer, or?
They just hover all the time.
They just hover. Okay. I was just wondering. All right, so then we'll go to Commissioner Uribe.
You guys have done a great job, you and Brian, at keeping us updated on this, and I wish we were already starting. You know, we don't want to wait any longer. You mentioned DOT is working with us on this, so they're supporting this effort?
We're working with them in coordination because of the intersection. So we're working with them on the intersection of University Boulevard and Semerat. So, yeah, we have exchanged design drawings with them. They've given them to us. We've exchanged concerns. We are doing raised crosswalks there where those slip lanes are, and which they have agreed to. So yes, we're working with them, but DOT is not working within the corridor beyond the intersection as it's our road.
Knowing, so I've been, we've had a lot of UCF events recently, so we've kind of been hanging out there, going that way a lot more. Has there been any conversation, or have they entertained, or has there been any data to look at reduction of speed? Because that's one thing that really stands out to me, and when you look at the John Young corridor, the OBT corridor, that has been a significant part of their pedestrian safety and their zero, you know, zero fatalities. Has that come up at all? Because on top of speeding, it's young people, and young people always think they're invincible, you know? And so just curious to, you know, to collaborate with this effort that's being done so much to protect the pedestrian.
Yes, ma'am. The speed limit is currently four to five, and our recommendation is to take that speed limit to forty. So it is a six-lane road, and it is, it is a major thoroughfare. So we are recommending a reduction in speed for this corridor.
Do you know if DOT is entertaining that?
On Semeran?
Yeah, or, no. I know, I've been, I've learned the hard way through, you know, that unfortunately, we may think it's lower, but if they're not going to be lower, it's actually more dangerous, you know? So there's a lot of, there's a lot to that, so just curious.
Incidentally, on the Alafoya Trail University project, DOT did lower the speed limit from forty-five to forty in advance of our improvement. So that's something that they're looking at as well all the time. We all know that the speed is what really kills.
Yeah, and at the same time, speed kills, but then if there's not any enforcement, then, you know.
Right, and that's why we're trying to put measures in the pavement, reducing the width of the pavement, doing all those features that throttle speed in every project we do. In this project also, there's a little bit of extra pavement with the recommended cross-section. We could further chicane the road through the design to help with that as well. So, yeah, just changing speed plates won't do anything. You have to have something to complement that. And so then we always look back at performance as well, and we can always come back and touch it up.
Well, one of the things that worries me as we're looking at this holistically is the scooters. The scooters are really fast, and they come up on you like just so quickly. It's like my new panic attack because a bike is one thing, a walker is one thing, but those scooters just come out of nowhere because I think they go like twenty, twenty-five miles an hour on a sidewalk. So when you're coming out of an area, you know, there's, I always fear that it just won't be fast enough because they're coming so fast that you're coming out and you may not be able to see them. And I think it's going to be a growing issue if, I'd be curious to see that data, you know, as it's growing because it's becoming more and more popular to jump on the scooters more than ride a bike and walk.
One of the reasons, it is, one of the reasons we're recommending for every driveway that we put a high-visibility crosswalk is because of the increase in micro-mobility use here. Most of the problems with pedestrians and bicyclists have been people pulling out of driveways and just, you know, they don't look, they don't stop, and they are very fast. So the high-visibility crosswalk is a tool. And when I say high-visibility, you know, the bright white ones that kind of glow? That's what we're recommending they install there, which should help people coming out of those driveways to understand that there is pedestrian and bicycle traffic and that they need to honor that crosswalk.
Yeah, and that's the scary thing is I don't think it's intentional, you know, when it comes to the scooters because they just really come out so fast. I mean, you could be clear one moment, and the next moment, there's one just zipping on you, and they're, it is absolutely, they're absolutely incapable of being able to slow down or stop, and they, and they just go. And I'm seeing this trend all over, and like not just in that quarter, I'm seeing it on Rio Grande, I'm seeing it on OBT, I'm seeing it on Orange Avenue, and I'm even seeing like a parent and then a child on one, like they're like going together, you know? So it's, I just worry what that data will end up looking as it becomes more and more popular because people are thinking it's faster, it's more efficient, we can get there faster than walking and riding, so. Thanks, guys. Continue to thank you for the work on this, and this is going to be huge for our community.
All right. Commissioner Semerat, do you have a potential motion?
I do. I have a, I have a motion, and then I also just had a concern to bring to the board at some point in time when we talk about the micromodal transportation. I think that I was, that I've been informed that there is an ordinance that doesn't allow us to plant trees down our sidewalks, only in the medians. And I think that when we try to encourage people to walk or ride bikes or do scooters or anything else, when we create miles and miles and miles of just no shade, it doesn't encourage that behavior. It prevents it, it makes us more car-dependent. So maybe at some point in time, the board could venture together to look at doing some type of an ordinance that would allow us to put trees along our sidewalk instead of just depending upon the lots that are getting developed to keep some of the trees, to keep it shaded. I don't know if there's ever an interest for that, so I'll say that, and I can issue a commissioner's report on it, but with regard to this project, I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommended action.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Scott. All in favor?
I said second, and nobody heard me.
Sit down. All right. She's feeling some kind of way here. Maybe you can do the next one. All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move to the next item. We're up to D five at this point. This is an item that was pulled from the consent agenda to go along with public hearing D five this afternoon. K one was pulled from the agenda. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to have Matthew Callis.
Miles, you've got the wrong PowerPoint. You don't have a PowerPoint for this. Mr. Callis?
Hold on just a moment, please.
We're on D five. D five platform.
Oh, this is the platform.
Got it?
All right. Mayor, Commissioners, Matthew Callis, Development Engineer-
Oh, this is the plat.
We just...
Oh, this is the state law.
All right. Mayors, commissioners, Matthew Callis, Development Engineering, Public Works. I'm going to have to excuse myself to let Matt Pritchett talk. I'm about to lose my voice. Had we been here a little earlier, I think I would have made it through. So I'm going to turn it over to emergency backup Matt from the county attorney's office to go through this. But I will be available for any questions afterwards, hopefully as long as my voice holds out. So I appreciate your indulgence in that. With that, we'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Good afternoon, Matt Pritchett, Assistant County Attorney.
Matt, you can raise that up if you need to. Now, the whole desk can come up. You won't have to keep leaning over like that.
Haven't been up here much, so.
Okay. There you go. All right.
So today, I'm going to talk to you about a proposed ordinance and resolution to update Chapter 34 subdivision regulations to comply with this year's Senate Bill 784, also known as administrative plat approval. And just to give you a brief outline, so our purpose here today is to consider a ordinance and resolution related to administrative plat approval to comply with this year's Senate Bill 784. For background, I'll just give a, I'll give you some more detail about the bill and then go into what code changes need to be made. And just for a general overview, and, you know, just to sort of consider the plat approval process, I have a slide describing what a plat is, and that's generally a map drawing or delineated representation of the division or subdivision of lands, being a complete and exact representation of the division or subdivision, and other information in compliance with Part 1, Chapter 177 Florida statutes. And the plat will depict the location of the lots, tracks, streets, easements, and other major features to allow for the conveyance and construction of homes and infrastructure necessary to support the development. And this was just something we contained in our last year's preliminary plat expedited building permit issuance ordinance. So I just thought we would bring it back here. To get into a little more detail about this year's Senate Bill 784, it was approved by the governor on June 20, 2025, and went into effect July 1, 2025, so only a few days after it was signed into law. What the plat does is it requires certain local governments to designate an administrative authority to receive, review, process, and approve final plat or replat submittals by that effective date. It also provides certain parameters to these local governments for receiving, processing, and issuing final decisions on such final plat or replat submittals. A little more detail about what the bill contains and what the requirements are, essentially four key requirements. The first of which is that it, the subject local government shall designate an administrative authority to receive, review, and process plats or replats, including designation of an administrative official responsible for approving or denying such plats or replats. And it provides defined terms for administrative authority and administrative official. The second requirement of the bill is that local governments are required to provide certain documentation and information within seven business days of any submitted plat or replat to the local government. Specifically, the local government is required to provide written notice acknowledging receipt of the plat or replat submittal and identification of any necessary documents or information missing from the submittal. The local government is also required to provide information regarding the plat or replat approval process within the local government, including requirements to complete the process and applicable timeframes for review and approval. The last two requirements of the bill, unless the applicant requests an extension of time, the local government's designated administrative authority must take final action on the plat or replat within the identified timeframe provided to the applicant. The county, or as the local government, may not request or require the applicant to file a time extension. If, and last but not least, if the local government does not approve the plat or replat, must notify the applicant in writing of specific reasons for nonapproval. Written notice must identify all areas of noncompliance and include specific citations. So now I'm going to go into our current process as laid out in county code. Section 34-48 of county code, as part of our subdivision regulations in Chapter 34, contain our plat processing and approval procedures. Basically, three key points or subsections, the first of which is that the county engineer is authorized to receive and process plats for approval and recording. Second, plats that have not been the subject of a public hearing as part of a PSP are required to be approved by the BCC at a public here, a public meeting. And this essentially consists of either commercial plats or one-lot plats. And specifically, how this is done is, once the plat is approved by staff, it's placed on consent agenda, and there's essentially a 30-day sort of wait time between when it, staff signs off and when it's approved by the board via consent agenda. And Matt Callis can confirm, but only, there's only been one instance of a plat being pulled from consent?
Correct. In, correct. In 11 years that I've been here, we've only had one plat pulled from consent agenda. That was by the school board for a charter school on the east side. Every other plat has gone through consent agenda without any issues.
And so that's how commercial plats are approved currently, placed on BCC consent and approved via consent agenda. Plats that have already, plats that have been the part of a public hearing as part of a PSP or a substantial change thereof, i.e. your more residential plats, these are approved by the county mayor as authorized by the BCC. So residential plats do not have to be approved by the BCC via consent. And this is just the current code language verbatim. This is the subsection A, which authorizes the county engineer to process submitted plats for approval and recording. And our code just provides that the plat complies with code and state law with respect to the plat, has some signing and sealing requirements also pursuant to state law. Subsection B, this is the code language regarding commercial plats, which are, as myself and Matt Callis mentioned, approved via BCC consent agenda. Subsection C is, provides for the residential plats. And these plats are, as I mentioned, approved by the county mayor as designated from the So I'm going to go into our proposed new process, basically, essentially an ordinance updating Section 3448 in a corresponding resolution. So through the proposed ordinance and resolution, we will continue to have the county engineer through the public works department to receive, review, and process submittals for final plats or replats. The county mayor or designee will be the signatory for approval on all final plats or replats. And in addition, in accordance with state law, the Orange County mayor or designee will accept any dedications made on an approved final plat or replat. And with the proposed new process, we're eliminating the 30-day waiting requirement for consent agenda items for our commercial plats. And this is just our new language, minimal updates to subsection A. I think we just included the words "final" in there to clarify that these are plats for final approval and recording, as opposed to the preliminary plats that would be considered through the new expedited building permit process. Subsection B, this is where the majority of the changes are, because these are our commercial plats that are currently approved via consent agenda through the BCC. You can see here, we changed that approval process to be delegated to the mayor or designee, similar to what we do currently for residential plats. And this is subsection C for residential plats. Again, pretty minimal changes. We just, we included one reference to the subdivision plan, which is our new, one of the new proposed plans in the Orange Code. And just to give you a brief summary, so per this year's Senate Bill 784, the county is required to designate an administrative authority to receive, review, process, and approve final plat or replat submittals. And through our proposed ordinance and resolution, we are, we're doing that. We have the county engineer and public works department continuing to receive, review, and process final plat or replat submittals. The county mayor or designee will sign all final plats and replats, and the county mayor or designee will accept any dedications made on an approved final plat or replat. And we do have one after-the-fact change to our resolution title. Just wanted to note it here. And we're just including the words "or designee" to show that the mayor, county mayor or designee can approve final plats and accept any dedications shown on such final So with that, I have the requested action before you today, and that would be to approve and adopt the ordinance pertaining to plat approval procedures, amending Chapter 34 of the Orange County Code as provided on the screen, and also approval and execution of a resolution regarding delegation of authority to the public works department to receive, review, and process final plats and middles, and delegation of authority to the county mayor to approve and accept any dedications on, shown on final plats. And with that, staff's available for any questions.
All right. Do we have any members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this item, Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing on this item. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero, would you like to offer a motion?
Oh, wait, I have a question.
After Commissioner Wilson asks a question.
Sorry. So just a quick question. I know everyone's exhausted and really hungry. Understanding that this is, the intent is to streamline something we were already doing, do you see any pitfalls or advantages to this particular legislative action and what we have to do to then be compliant?
Yeah, I think, I don't see any major pitfalls that we aren't already doing. It was in 2009 that we made a change to the code to allow the mayor to sign off once the subdivision that come through is a public hearing. That allows the commission to provide any kind of conditions at that point that can affect the plat, so that still stays into effect. The advantage then is removing that 30-day wait while, once staff is approved, the mile or hazard in our hands, we get it on consent agenda, that 30 days will be eliminated, which will help the multifamily projects and a lot of the commercial projects. So actually be a benefit in that regard. The other aspect of the Senate bill was a seven-day review period. We have a standard condition of approval where we have a presufficiency meeting, so we're just kind of considering that part of that presufficiency meeting. It gives us seven days to deal with that.
Great. Thank you.
Motion to approve requested action.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Gomez-Cudero, a second by Commissioner Scott. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. We have made it to, I believe, the final item of today, and this is item D6. We pulled case five, I think it was, from this morning's agenda for, to be considered with the public hearing this afternoon. We are going to have Gerald Marks, a project manager from Traffic Engineering. I'm certain he probably has briefed each of you regarding a public safety item regarding essentially automated enforcement within school zones. And with that, Mr. Marks, you are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Gerald Marks. Like the mayor said, I'm here to discuss the Orange County School Zone Speed Detection Camera So in today's presentation, we're going to talk about a little bit of background, go over a school safety study that was performed, an ordinance that's needed for the program, next steps forward, a memorandum of understanding that's required, and the action, we will have an action that's requested. So for the background, a little bit of the background for the state statute is that in order to install these systems, a county or municipality must collect traffic data and consider that data in selecting the school zones. The county or municipality must also determine that there is a heightened safety risk within that school zone. The periods of enforcement, big picture, is 30 minutes before the start of school to 30 minutes after the end of the school session. And there are fines, $100 fine for speed limits that are 10 miles per hour over the speed limit, the posted speed limit within the school zone, and there must be a 30-day public awareness campaign. So back on December of last year's, December 17th last year, staff presented, prevented the requirements for developing an ordinance, setting forth the intent, terms, processes, and for the program-specific school zones within where the cameras would be placed. And so board directed staff to do two things: move forward with conducting studies on the 12 potential schools, and that would be two per commission district for year one, and development of an ordinance authorizing the placement of these devices within the school zones. What makes this possible is the Florida statute approved a bill on, Florida statute, I'm sorry, 316.008 on July 1 of 2023, authorizing a county or municipality to act and enact an ordinance to place these cameras or speed detection systems within a school zone. Part of that ordinance is it must consider the traffic data and supporting evidence to support the installation of these cameras, and it also must constitute a heightened safety risk that warrants additional enforcement measures. So for phase one, we coordinated with each of the district commissioners, Orange County Public Schools, and the sheriff's office on school site selection. Part of that evaluation is we conducted speed studies in 12 school zones, two schools in each commission district. And basically, we looked at those to see if they met the requirements of the heightened safety risk. So the school zones that were selected all were signed with school flashes indicating a reduced school zone, and that's a requirement of the program. And the schools' flashes must be flashing within the arrival and dismissal periods. So for year one of the program implementation, the schools we selected for District 1 are Dr. Phillips and Hunter's Creek Elementary, Rock Springs. For District 2, Rock Springs and Meadowwoods Middle School. District 3, we selected Sally Points Elementary and, Three Points Elementary in Sally Ride. District 4, Discovery Middle School and South Creek Middle School. District 5, Wedgefield K-8 and Cheney Elementary. And District 6, it was Oak Hill and Palm Metal Elementary Schools. So the speed data was collected on a Tuesday and a Thursday in April, April of this year, while school was still in session. And the data was reported at speeds starting from 0 to 10 miles an hour, and then in increments of 5. And so that data was aggregated to summarize the violations for the arrival and dismissal periods. And so a school inventory of all signs, traffic calming devices, flashes was also completed for each of the school zones that were studied. So looking at some of the data that we found here, pointing out a couple of schools here. Sally Ride, if you look at Sally Ride, so all of the schools had vehicles that were traveling over the posted speed limit within the school zones. So the yellow that you see is the 0 to 10 miles per hour. And so if you look at a school like maybe South Creek Middle School, where maybe about 25% were speeding over 10 miles an hour, you have another 35% that was doing 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So that's about 70% of the vehicles within that school zone that were speedy. I'm sorry, 60%. And so if you look at Sally Ride, that's the same thing. You have about 55% or 50, a little bit more than 50% of the cars or the vehicles traveling through that school zone at more than 10 miles, or 0 to 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. And then you have another maybe 15% that were traveling over And then you have another, maybe 15% that were traveling over the 10 miles per hour in that school zone. So there is a need for this program within the school districts because there is excessive speeding. So over a two-day collection period, nearly all schools experienced of about 400 vehicles speeding during arrival and dismissal periods. And so when you break that down, it's about 100 vehicles in each school zone for each hour of dismissal and arrival in a single day. All schools experienced more than 20% of the traffic speeding, more than what we call the 25 mile per hour survivability speed for collision with a pedestrian, and some schools recording as speeds, 70% of the vehicles speeding through the school zones. So with these results, staff concluded that these results did meet the requirements for the heightened safety risk as stipulated by Florida statute 316.008. Ordinance, so for the ordinance, we, the creation of chapter 35, article nine for the Orange County Code, I just want to point out a couple of sections within the ordinance. Section 35-116, which is the intent, establishes the school zone program using the automated speed system program or cameras, and it aims to enhance the safety for the students within school zones, and it provides additional enforcements for schools within the school zone. Section 35-118, the use of speed detection systems, so the county has chosen to implement the speed detection system using the Florida statute 316.008. Speed detection systems will support law enforcement using, ensuring drivers comply with the state and state laws in, within school zones. So section 35-119, the program administration, the Orange County Sheriff's Office will perform the enforcement duties for the program. Orange County will contract with a vendor to supply the services, the cameras, all of the maintenance of the program, and implementing the enforcement of chapter 2023-174. Section 35-125, designating school zones. So the school zones that were selected are part of the ordinance, there were 12 schools that were selected, and there were 13 total school zones. One of the, one of the schools had two school zones that warranted additional enforcement. School zones must constitute a heightened safety risk that addition, that warrants additional safety measures, and each speed detection system must be approved via amendment to this section in accordance with applicable law. Section 35-122, the enforcement procedures, violations if captured, if a vehicle exceeds more than 10 miles over in the speed, 10 miles over the posted speed limit within the school zone, each fine is $100, and there is an appeal process per Florida statute This applies to 30 minutes before and after the start of, and the start and end of a school day where the speed limits are reduced, and during the entirety of the day at regularly posted speeds. Section 35-124, there's annual reporting that's required by the Florida Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, and this would become effective if adopted today, August 26th of 2025. The implementation of the devices wouldn't begin until fall, the fall of 2026. Next steps. So we want to reach out to the community, for community engagement, and educate the public as far as speeding, the dangers of speeding within the school zones, and have them understand like how this program is coming about and where it started, and the, the goal of the program. There's a two-year, so in year two and subsequent years, there will be, understanding the fact that we're going to two more schoo, two more districts for the county, so we'll have two, two schools per district, which will be 16 additional schools for the installation for year two and three. The first year will give us a good idea of what we need for determination of staff resources for the Orange County Sheriff's Office, which are partners, and for Orange County for this program to be successful. And so we'll submit a yearly report to the Board of County Commissioners. We will go talk, we'll sit down and discuss the results that we have from the first year, and use those results to select schools for years two and three. Schedule, public ordinance here today, so solicitation for a vendor contract would be in October of 2025. The camera installation will begin in the spring and conclude in the summer of 2026. Public awareness, the 30-day that's mandated by the Florida statute would begin on the first of the school year for next year, August 2026. The live cameras, or I guess the violation period would begin September of 2026. And so we'll use that year to evaluate the program and its effectiveness, and so phase two for the data collection would begin in the spring of 2027. Memorandum of understanding. So this was pulled from an agenda item from this morning, 25-1165, to go along with the ordinance here, but the memorandum of understanding is with Orange County and the Orange County Sheriff's Office, and it outlines the collaboration between the two agencies, or the Sheriff's Office and Orange County, to use Don Sworden Traffic Infraction Enforcement Officers to help with the implementation of the red light camera program and the speed zone camera program. Funding and staffing, the county agrees to fund, fully fund the cost for the TIOs, including salaries, training, benefits, and equipment through the sheriff's annual budget with adjustments made as needed on growth of the program. Operations and enforcement, the Sheriff's Office will manage the TIOs to ensure proper training, develop procedures for issuing all violations, and review, and any revenue from citations will be retained here by Orange County in accordance with applicable laws. So budget and planning and ratios. So for the 25, 26 fiscal year, the Sheriff's Office are, will receive three TIOs for the school enforcement program, and future staffing levels will be based on camera to TIO ratio. So we heard from the Sheriff's Office for every 13 cameras that they have, they need about one TIO for that, and so we'll review the TIOs for ratios for, for the speed zone cameras as well. Action requested. So we're asking for the approval and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 35 of the Orange County Code by creating article nine, speed zone, school speed zone infraction and enforcement cameras, authorizing a school speed zone enforcement program and the use of speed detection systems. Specifying intent, creating definitions, providing a, for program administration and implementation requirements, designing school zones, creating enforcement procedures, providing for collection of evidence, public records, and retention requirements, requiring annual reporting, providing for the remittance of collected fines and costs, and providing for an effective date. Approval of, approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding between Orange County Sheriff's Office and Orange County, Florida, retaining to, relating to traffic infraction enforcement officers, and to allow staff to correct any non-sustantial grammatical or scravenirs errors. And so I'm available if there are any questions about the program.
All right, before we get to that, since this is a public hearing, do we have members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this item, Mayor.
All right, since we have no speakers, then we'll close the public hearing portion. And now if there are questions by members of the board, we have Captain Crabbe, I promoted him, here from the Orange County Sheriff's Office as well, so. All right, any, any questions? Commissioner Uribe, did you press a button?
Yes.
Commissioner Uribe, then Commissioner Gomez-Cudero, followed by Commissioner Scott, then Commissioner Wilson.
First of all, I want to say, this is huge. Woo-hoo to you all and to all of us for taking this bold step. In my opinion, a little slow, but that's what we do in government, you know, you're very thorough. I did want to add, so I did watch this on the news this morning, okay? And the perception on the news was, and we want to make sure we get our message out, was it was just for 30 minutes before school and 30 minutes after school? It did not say all day. And so we want to make sure the message is clear. I also wanted to, you know, and I think that's great, you know, I, I think this is great. I, you know, there's so many schools, and you know, after what happened at Oak Ridge High School, I wanted to bump them, but I know that we have, we really have to be organic about this and make sure that, that, you know, that this is what, where we're going. And I do believe at, at some level, I saw, I was explaining, Commissioner Wilson, I saw her constituents on TV, because Channel 6 did a story on Dr. Phillips Elementary, because that school does, I was in your area one morning, the amount of people who walk because the neighborhood is so close is really incredible, where people are taking their grandchildren and children to school. And one more point on Sally Ride, not only was it excessive speeding, it's a majority of semi trucks.
Yes.
And that is huge. And so this is where we know, and, and let me just say, when I've announced this and Taft, they're so excited, you know? They, they, you know, they're, they're a little neighborhood in between the two heavy industrial areas, and we want, we, it's not, we're not, of course, they wish the semi trucks wouldn't come, but at least respect what's happening. You don't want something to happen bad. And so I think this is great. This is such a huge step for us in Orange County. I, I only, the only thing I've, I've ever said is, how are we going to handle? And the reason why I ask this is because after that young student was killed at Oak Ridge High School, I was out there doing a lot of interviews, and the amount of official cars, right, from deputies to the postman, FedEx, and all of that speeding was crazy. Like the reporter was like, oh my gosh, look at this, if we stepped out, it would be so insane. Curious to know, okay, so we're always here thinking about an individual driver, like a citizen, right? What's going to happen when you're dealing with government vehicles, private vehicles like FedEx and Amazon? Can you share a little bit of feedback on that, too?
Yeah, absolutely. So I also managed the red light camera program, and the exact same thing happens. And so when we get a tag number that comes back to an agency, or like sometimes we get them from Link's, sometimes we get them from Orange County, so those are processed as regular NOVs, just like it would anyone else, and the driver of that vehicle is the one that's cited with the notation. So a lot of the times, the Links, they will call us up and say, hey, my driver on this day received a red light camera ticket, and so that driver is responsible for that ticket. And so I think there is an internal policy that Links has for red light cameras and so forth, but the speed zone cameras would work exactly the same way.
Okay, so that'll happen to commercial vehicles?
Yes.
And, and how will you handle like a postman? I mean, is that going to be, we're going to get the federal government involved on that point? And I'm not trying to throw any deputies or anybody under the bus, okay? But, you know, sometimes they got to get the brake quick or whatever. Just curious what's going to be the protocol, because we want to be honest and fair. I don't think that anyone, I hate, I say this because we're all human beings. I don't think any of us get in the car and say, we want to speed today, you know? Time, life, picking up kids, you know? Unfortunately, it happens, but what we're trying to do is prevent casualties and accidents, right? So that's, that's the ultimate goal, vision zero, everything that we do. So just curious on that end, and then also, there are no points associated with this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so it is up to, so if it's my car, registered in my name, that I let my neighbor drive to the store and they get it, it's going to come to me, but it's, it's, it's always to the registered car?
Correct.
Okay.
So to answer your question about the post office, so that's, that's a little, a bit of a sticky situation, because we've had that before with red light cameras, and dealing with the TIOs, there's a, there's a statute that we can't interfere with public or government officials in the mail, I believe that was. So that was a little bit of a sticky situation, but they're still treated the same.
So we're just going to try to discourage, make sure that we're going to let the post office know, we're going to let all those people know, these are in effect. And I think, and then my whole point is, communication goes beyond just neighborhoods and residents, you know? So that, that was where I was going, you know? And, and I would have never noticed it until I went and I stood out there and realized how, how much accelerated speed there is in a, in an area.
Yeah, and the, the second part of your question is for the registered owner. So the registered owner, how the statute reads, it's the registered owner that, the first registered owner on the title would actually get the notice of violation, but that registered owner can contest that and fill out an affidavit transferring liability to the driver of the vehicle at the time. And so there's a process by which there's an affidavit that can be filled out, notarized, and turned into public works, and then that violation gets removed out of the registered owner's name and to the driver that stated.
So if somehow my car appears and my husband got it, I can go down and file a form with you guys and say, you need a file, I got it, I got it.
Transfer liability, yes.
No, it's good, though, but people share cars, people rent cars, or these tour, you know, this, this off-the-market situation, and then I'm assuming with rental cars, it'll be kind of like the E-Pass? It'll be presented to the rental car company and they'll notify whoever had the car at that time?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that happens quite a bit with the red light camera company. Georgiana worked on some legislation with that as well, or some, some Orange County rules for that as well. The rental company has a right to transfer the liability to the person who rented the vehicle at that time, so yes.
And they'd usually charge a fee on that, too.
Sometimes they do, yes.
Yes, I've noticed on, especially on E-Pass and tolls and stuff like that.
Yes.
Great job, this is huge, very excited and can't wait to see it go up, and we should, you know, have, and whatever we can do to help spread the word, count us in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I didn't, I didn't really need to ask any questions such far. I just say, way to go, Gerald.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did demonstrate when I was former school was on the list.
Yes, Oak Hill Elementary, that received a lot of complaints, Hayawassee and, and Old Winter Garden there, there were a lot of accidents and speeding and a lot of conflicts in that area, and so speaking with Commissioner Scott, he thought, and that was the school that Commissioner Scott attended, he, he let me know, Oak Hill Elementary, as he was a...
So everybody knew Oak Hill was a challenge.
Oak Hill, yes.
Very good, well, I'm glad you're, you're going to finish that school, and thank you for your work in my district.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scott?
I'd like Commissioner Moore, I just wanted to say, great job. And Captain Crabbe, congratulations.
He's still living.
Oh, okay, I was like, I missed the promotion ceremony, I was like...
Mayor's trying.
Okay. Well, you know, Sheriff, Under Sheriff, y'all listening, I think, you know, Captain Crabbe sounds good right now, I support that. Thank you all for your work, I appreciate you.
All right, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I just, I mean, at this point, it is, I even agree with everybody's, what they're saying. I think I, I'm not sure if this was the direction that Commissioner Uribe was going in, but for me, I believe that it's okay if people think we're doing this all the time in a school zone, and even more importantly, not even really knowing if their school is one of our pilot schools. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with them thinking, oh wait, there's eyes on me now. And I do think that there'll be exponential, I think, dividends from this investment. And I mean that in the sense of safety, not financial, because I think that having set these pilots, these programs out, it, you know, these key locations will then establish that this is what's happening, we're going to continue to get this data and build on it. I'm hopeful to be able to see it in some of the other areas of concern, but your opinion, if you will, about what you think we might be able to do in conjunction with this. So I, you know, I always go back to those design standards, and part of me thinks, okay, if we see an area that we know continues to be a problem, even after this is implemented, is it time to talk about the raised crosswalk? Is it time to talk about other potential safety measures, and can we use some of this data and apply it in that way?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we're hoping for is that, first of all, this changes driver behavior, and to have the, people pay attention in the school zones, not texting and so forth. And the other thing is, with some of the revenue that's generated from this, we can make improvements to those school zones, whether it's adding additional flashers or reducing the, the width of the crossing. We just have to take each location step by step and then evaluate that what can be done, looking at what, some of the causing factors that might be, or more aware, making drivers more aware that the school zone is approaching and alert them a little bit better. So yes, absolutely, there, there are numerous things, things that can be done within, within this program. And more than anything, that this program will get people's attention, and the national rate is about 70% reduction in speed, and so if that happens, we, we've done our job into alerting the public to let them know that, hey, this is a school zone, and we should be, have a little bit more caution as, as drivers through it.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Commissioner Semerit?
I just wanted to say thank you.
You briefed us several times on it, we've really supported you and appreciated assistance in selecting schools and are looking forward to more progress. in selecting schools and are looking forward to more programs like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gerald, for everything you have done and always been accessible to me and your team as well. And, um, but, um, I, I have a question. Gerald, I see that the list of the schools, the most elementary schools, right? But, um, but this is because the collection information that you got is more speeding than accidents? Why I'm saying this is because you know that we have been talking about how the high schoolers, like Commissioner Uribe said today, prior to this presentation, how the scooters they go so fast, and these, you know, even the residents from District Four has called my office to say that they just, you know, they bump onto you. I mean, they, you, you have to ru, you know, rush yourself from the sidewalk because they will go over, go over you, you know? But they are middle schoolers and high schoolers, no elementary school. So it's more speeding than the accident that you get that collection, information collection?
So, so are you asking for the, the schools within your district that were chosen?
Well, my district and the whole, you know, the whole list, which the majority of them is elementary school.
Yeah, so that, those were the most vulnerable users are, and so what we did in, in those areas, we, we looked at corridors that are four-lane, most of them, and divided or undivided, where they had the volume and the speeds. And so, and also, we got the list from the Orange County Sheriff's Office and the Orange County School Board, and we compared that list, and then we brought that list to, just making sure that you're in agreement with some of those schools that were chosen on that list. But yeah, so a lot of those are where we get most of the complaints from. And so there's some elementary schools and mostly elementary schools, but quite a few middle schools, and I think we don't have that, very many high schools with reduced school speed zones.
Yes, good afternoon. Yes, Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, one of the things, especially with the Oak Ridge incident, that it was devastating, it was not a school zone that it was reducing its speed, and actually the young lady, she was struck at the speed limit, which it was 45 miles per hour, and we know that if you get struck at 40 miles per hour, your rate of surviving is only 10%. Before, when the Department of Transportation, they began to establish the school zones, it was mostly for elementary and middle schools. But now that they have revised that, one of the things that we were talking is that we can also start enforcing this within high schools. We have not done it yet, but certainly, as it has been alluded here, is that they are the people that they have the cars and they are driving the fastest, so it is for everybody, so this is something that we're going to be considering. And just to go along with what Gerald was saying about that any money that is left from the program that we will reinvest it, is the safe routes to schools. So also because of the kids walking to school, so not only we're going to be looking at adjacent to the school, but within a mile radius, to see what we can do so we can start promoting the multimodal and kids going to school running their bikes or walking and some other alternatives, but yet this is going to be part of a larger approach, just to make sure that everybody is safe.
So, so just to, you know, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Uribe, just because I know the school. Commissioner, the Three Point School, Elementary School, do you think that is, is active in Goldenrod? Because I know it's Goldenrod, then the school is inside the...
If I can, the reason why is because it's a cut through from all the apartments?
Okay.
And there's not enough even right of way for the kids to cross, even the parking is across the street.
Yeah, but the red light would be where, in Goldenrod?
No. The red light? It's a camera.
It's the camera, that's what I'm saying, like, the camera would be in Goldenrod?
Yes. Where the active school zone is.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Cordero, I had presented, like Shannon, I presented a few. I gave, I think I gave you guys five.
Yes.
And then they took the study to see the traffic and the speeding, and unfortunately, they made, they were not one of my priorities. I actually was more concerned about Shenandoah on Conway Road, but didn't make the cut.
Yeah. Okay, that was it. Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, move, approve. And there's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you all for your presence this afternoon. Thank you, Captain Crab. I'm going to say enough, other people will say it. All right, we stand adjourned.